Planning Commission. There it goes. Now I'm going to call it. I'm going to call this planning commission meeting to order on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. It's oh, well, now it's not 6:30. Is it 7:06 PM? To anybody from the public that has tuned in, we are having video technical difficulties and our meeting will be conducted with only the audio tonight, but we will be able to see PowerPoints and share screen for some of our presentation. I'm going to read the COVID protocol notice ironically. Here we go. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, which authorizes the town to conduct essential business via teleconference. During the meeting, members of the public may participate by providing public comment during the meeting by joining the Zoom webinar. Let's see. Live verbal comments may be made by the public by using the raised hand feature if you've joined us. And before the meeting, members of the public may also provide public comment by sending comments to the planning commission via email. Comments received before 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided in their entirety to the commission prior to the meeting and will be part of the record, but will not be read verbally at the meeting. For more information, visit the town's website. I will do a roll call. This I'm going to need you obviously to audio say no hand raising, but give me a verbal confirmation here. Roll call Vice Chair Hillis. Commissioner Helber.
Present.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Teal.
I don't see him on.
He is not on.
Hold on, let me. Okay, why don't we keep going and I will text him.
Okay, Commissioner Davis. Also not here. Are they not being let in or?
I think that Theal is in now. He's he he's joining.
Oh, I see his name down here. Oh, there he is. Okay. Commissioner Teal, you are here. Verbal confirmation for me. Uh oh, now he has no audio. Commissioner Teal.
I heard it.
Yep. I hear you. I can hear him, but he sounds really muffled and distant.
But you are there, so I I'm.
Yes.
I'm hearing you're there. Okay. Commissioner Davis, did we find him? This is.
Commissioner Teal asked if this is any better. No, it still sounds the same.
Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Could you try opening your video one more time?
Oh. We knew that.
Wow, now now we're cooking with gas.
Fabulous, technical. Okay. I see Commissioner Teal is there. Commissioner Davis, I still do not see.
Can someone reach out to Commissioner Davis and just let him know that we resolved the the video issue on the original link?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, Chair. I don't mean to. Through the chair.
Yes, please do that. If someone is able to. Don't see. Um, oh, there she is. Director Hamid, are you able to reach out?
I'm working on it.
Perfect. Okay, Commissioner Bodie.
I'm here.
Here. Commissioner Polsky.
Present.
And Commissioner Chair Lester, I am here. I would like to quickly just welcome our new commissioner, Mr. Nick Polsky. Thank you so much for your volunteering to do this for the town and it's a big job. We know that. So we'll give you time to acclimate, but please feel free to ask any questions at any time moving forward. As there's a lot of things that we've been talking about for the last year or two that we sort of know the ins and outs of that you might not. So please feel free to jump in at any time. And thank you again for your service to the town.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
And we are also joined by Planning Director Hamid and Assistant Planner Mio Mendez. And I believe we have some applicants here as well from St. Mary's, so I don't have the entire list of of who we have, but welcome. Do any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest to report? There we have Commissioner Davis. I see you. You're here. Okay, we have a full commission here. Okay, conflict of interest to report.
I went to Santa Clara, so no conflict.
Seeing none, we will move on. Have any of the commissioners had contact with the applicant that they would like to report?
Not since the last time they were before us, four years ago.
Okay, so we'll move on to item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Davis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd be happy to do so.
Let's. Do we have a flag?
Um, yes, I can try to locate one. Hold on. Um.
I have one if you want.
Okay.
Sure.
Great.
Join me. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and with.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comments. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the planning commission. The audience should be aware that the commission may not discuss the details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on future on a future agenda. Please note that we will be taking public comment during each agenda item. Let me see if there are any hands up. And if you are going to speak, please state your name and address for the record and you'd have three minutes. I'm seeing no hands up for. No. Okay. So we're going to close that public comment portion and move on to the adoption of the consent agenda, which would be the February 1st, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt? Or are there any changes that anyone needed to make to those minutes?
What move? We adopt the minutes as presented?
Okay, Davis, do I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Question before we move forward, is it standard that only numbers that were part of the meeting vote, or is it is that a discretionary thing?
Yeah, he'll probably abstain since he was not at that meeting. Yeah. Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Vice Chair Hillis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Polsky.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Teal.
How's the audio? Any better?
A little muffled, but. Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner Bodie.
Hi.
And Chair Lester, I. Adoption of the consent agenda passes six to one abstention. And we will move on now to the adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda? Okay, with that, Commissioner Bodie. Do I have a second?
Hi. Second.
Commissioner Davis. Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote. Vice Chair Hillis.
Hi.
Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
Commissioner Polsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Okay, Commissioner Bodie.
And I.
And Lester, I. The motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item number six, public hearing. This is St. Mary's College to approve a permitted use determination and design review permit to allow for the construction of a 4,324, excuse me, square foot, 21 foot, 10 inch tall new baseball stadium, new entry plaza and redesigned landscaping at 1928 St. Mary's Road. Director Hamid, would you like to say anything before we begin? I know we're going to have a staff presentation.
Yes, thank you. So St. Mary's is here tonight. Their team is joining us and I will allow them to make an introduction during their portion of the presentation. And I just want to acknowledge that St. Mary's has been working with staff on a pretty significant project for their campus and it's a new baseball stadium. The stadium was anticipated as part of the master plan, which also had an EIR and they were both adopted. The since that master plan was adopted in 2017, a lot has changed. There has been staff changes and there have been COVID occurred. So even though we might anticipate things to occur on a certain timeline, things also needed to be modified. So this project is a much smaller project than what was anticipated. However, this is a much needed project for the campus. And we're really excited to work with St. Mary's and to be able to bring this project forward. We think it will add a lot to the functionality of the the campus and improve the aesthetics and also allow more efficiency for the entire St. Mary's Athletics Team. So we're really excited and Planner Mendez will make the presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, so let's just get right into it. It's gonna, let's hope everything works out with all of our technical difficulties so far. All right, so I'm hoping that everybody can see that.
Thank you.
Great. So like Director Hamida said, my name is Mio Mendez. I'm the town's assistant planner and I bring to you today the St. Mary's Baseball Stadium Upgrade. For our presentation tonight, we'll go over a little background and that's misspelled. Information, the request, site information, project description, the discussion, talking about its compliance with the St. Mary's Campus Master Plan, the standards for permitted use determination and design review through the Campus Master Plan and some general plan review. Then we'll go over some sequel requirements and staff's recommendation. So the request is to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting planning commission resolution for the St. Mary's College to approve a permitted use determination, UPO 1-22 and design review permit, DRB 01-22 to allow for the construction of a 4,324 square foot, 21 feet tall, tank, 21 feet, 10 inch tall new baseball stadium and new entry plaza and redesigned landscaping at 1928 St. Mary's Road, assessment parcel number 258150005. Some brief details, we're talking about the neighborhood slash area description. The project site is located on St. Mary's College. The specific area with all sports and recreation, approximately an 18.8 acre project area that's located on the northwest corner of campus, which can be seen off of the parkways of St. Mary's Parkway and De La South Drive. Some of your current site conditions, currently St. Mary's College has temporary bleachers that are installed on an annual basis that are brought in and brought off throughout the baseball season. The bleachers currently hold approximately 100 spectators and the as you can see, the netting is about 45 feet tall. And that's going to come into consideration here because part of the proposal is an increase in height in netting for safety reasons. And then basically there's there's already associated landscaping and parking along the first base side of the of the baseball stadium. So basically the St. Mary's Master Plan consistency, like we said earlier, on May 10th, 2017, Town Council adopted the Campus Master Plan, which also certified the Environmental Impact Report, adopted adopted associated ordinances and updates, including the design guidelines and standards. The previous baseball stadium, because this was reviewed through the Campus Master Plan, was actually a phase two project that was supposed to be 39,050 square feet baseball stadium with approximate height of about 35 feet two stories, which includes restrooms, locker rooms, meeting rooms, offices, seating, storage and amenities. And it was supposed to start around the 2020 date. As you can, as we've already stated prior, the current proposal is for a 4,324 square foot baseball stadium with prefabricated permanent 20 foot tall bleachers, including 662 open air seats and a press box, and it will be built in a Spanish colonial revival manner to be cohesive with the rest of the campus. So the standards, as as I stated prior, for this project, it's required to go through a permitted use determination and design review requirements through St. Mary's Campus Master Plan. So for the Campus Master Plan permitted use determination, the use has to be in substantial conformance with the Campus Campus Master Plan and all applicable policy standards and guidelines. The use is consistent with the Campus Master Plan's environmental impact report and would not generate further environmental impacts requiring new and expanding mitigating measures. And the use is consistent with all other applicable policies and regulations of the general plan and the Maraga Municipal Code. So the ones that stood out specifically and can be found in the staff report are goal A, which is improving existing buildings and infrastructure, because as we stated prior, all that's out there right now is a detached announcer's booth and two different attached dugouts. So we're also looking at strategy 8.1, where we're looking to upgrade buildings and systems to support academic programs while maintaining the architectural heritage and intimate feel of the main campus. This is definitely accomplished specifically by building in the manner of the Spanish colonial style as previously stated and will also support all academic programs within the college. Goal F is to design the campus to support revenue generation and conservation. By reducing the size, you're definitely reducing the impacts that were reviewed within the Campus Master Plan's environmental impact report and also creating further opportunities for for revenue generation as 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 you can see out there currently, withstands that can hold approximately 100 people, now increasing that to 662 definitely provides that opportunity. And then strategy F is to use of campus as a partner in and promote backdrop for revenue generation and fostering connections to current and future visitors and donors. That, I mean, it pretty much speaks for itself in this situation, because a new stadium definitely provides opportunities to bring in new donors and also provide a more, a better environment for future visitors. All right, so the standards for review of the design review projects, so the project has to be designed that conforms to high quality design as set forth in the Campus Master Plan Design Guidelines. It contributes to the character and image of St. Mary's College campus as an environment of beauty, rich historic character and learning. The project design considerations and response to architectural and landscape context of its immediate surroundings and to overall college campus, particularly the historic element and natural settings thereof. The project design use high quality and consistent and attractive materials, finishes and design elements that complement and enhance the existing campus environment, landscape, buildings and structures. The project design does not generate adverse conditions of noise, shade, shadow, light or glare that would be detrimental to the health, safety and wellness of the campus population or the broader Maraga community. So, sorry, I jumped a little forward there. So in the staff report, we did look at 22 different policies and procedures regarding the design of the project specifically, where it talked from anything to how it was designed, what materials were being used. They're definitely building in the Spanish colonial revival theme. They're using white stucco, which is the same material that can be found on the approved dugouts that are there currently, can be found in the adjacent recreation center and throughout building and on buildings throughout the rest of the campus. So basically what we're looking at is a baseball stadium that's designed with St. Mary's College in mind. And then we have our general plan and area plan consistency and the general plan consistency basically comes down to land use policy LU 4.5, where the site institution facility so that so they complement the natural environment and so they will not intrude upon areas of adjacent land uses. As I, as was stated prior and has been stated multiple times, this is a reduction in what was already reviewed in the previous Campus Master Plan and environmental, associated environmental impact report and therefore would not intrude upon adjacent land uses that weren't already reviewed. And so here's where we're at with Sequa and under the Certified Program slash Project Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, associated with the 2017 St. Mary's College Campus Master Plan, the proposed baseball facility, spectator facility was previously anticipated. The proposed baseball stadium project is a reduction of the original proposed baseball stadium project reviewed within the Certified Environmental Impact Report of the 2017 St. Mary's College of California Campus Master Plan, therefore with mitigation measure measures encompassed within the Environmental Impact Report, the project would have no significant impacts on the environment and would therefore not require further environmental review. So here's our recommendation, the permitted use determination and design review application for a 4,324 square foot, 21 feet, 10 inch tall new baseball stadium entry plaza and redesigned landscaping at 1928 St. Mary's Road is consistent with the St. Mary's College Campus Master Plan, Campus Plan Design Guidelines, General Plan Zoning Ordinance as described above, and therefore staff recommends approval of the proposed new baseball stadium project as conditioned in draft resolution PC underscore dash zero two two two. And that is my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Vice Chair Hillis.
I, it's either question for staff or for the applicant, but just looking at the previous design, I believe it was 950 seats, is it foreseen that in the future you might want to expand to that number or are you are you looking at keeping the smaller number in the revision?
So through the chair, once the applicant makes their presentation, they can comment on that.
Okay.
So are there any?
Let's reserve it for just staff. Which is going to be hard because maybe we should, let's just see if there's anything specific to staff in the report that we have here, because I think most of the questions will be for the applicant. So any other specific? Commissioner Helber.
Milo, thank you for giving a very detailed presentation. And I apologize if I missed it. But I know that the two most critical issues that we looked at every time we look at St. Mary's Colleges amplified sound and lighting. And I didn't see anything here about amplified sound and lighting within the plan. Did I miss it?
According to the plans that we received, there was no indication on whether there would be more amplified sound than what is already found on onsite.
Okay.
And.
If they were to include something, would they have to come back later for that?
Potentially.
Would that have been addressed in the EIR initially?
Yes, yes.
And because this project is smaller.
Yes.
Wouldn't trigger anything above and beyond.
Through the chair, that is correct, and they are not proposing any lighting at the stadium.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we move to the applicant? Would the applicant like to at this time give a presentation? Yes, we would definitely. Mio, do you have the presentation to pull up?
Give me a moment. Okay, well, while he does that, why don't we go through introductions? So we make the best use of everyone's time. I am Sarah Speron, Vice President of Facilities for St. Mary's College, and I have a few team members with me here today. First up, Mike Matoso, who is our Director of Athletics. I have Jim Vera, who is the owner of Cal Mill Construction and Sam Harned, who is our landscape architect and Corey Vare, who is the project manager for Cal Mill Construction. And as we are working on this, I'll just start with a little bit of background about the project. As Mio talked about earlier, we have taken the project and scaled it back. This is based on donor funding. So all of our projects on campus are typically funded by outside sources such as you know, donor support. We know that at this point in time, we are only going to be able to fund the 662 seats in the stadium and we do not have any plans to move that any larger. So this is scaled back from what we had put in the original master plan. We are not adding any additional lighting or any changes to sound. So the games will be exactly the same as they are before. The only difference is that we are raising the height of the nets because we have a safety issue where the balls are foul balls are flying up and over and hitting our rec center and into our pool where we have students that are using the pool at that time. So that's why we are proposing to raise the nets to a height of 65 feet in order to prevent any of the foul balls going into the rec center and then adding permanent bleachers. So as Mio talked about earlier, we have been renting bleachers every season, bringing in about 100 people onto the campus for these temporary these temporary bleachers and we're looking to just have the bleachers in place permanently so that we don't have to do that back and forth. And so that it has definitely the feel of a Division One Athletics Team who you might have seen had a big week. So in addition to that, we have a second phase of the project, which is to add a ticket booth and fencing and finish the landscape in the front of the project. We are still working on the funding for that piece, but that is basically encompasses the whole entire project at this point in time, which you will notice is substantially less than we had in our original master plan. So I would like to turn it over to Mike Matoso. I know that he would like to talk from the perspective of athletics. And then our folks from Cal Mill and our landscape architect are happy to share some of the information they did and putting together this plan.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for having us tonight. Yeah, I mean, this is close to a 16 year old concept of a project. You know, I I think I've said this, my my end of my fifth year at St. Mary's and I think you, as you go through, this is my sixth institution that I've worked at. And I think it's, you know, you go through places, you kind of learn lessons and my lesson. Learn lessons and my lesson at St. Mary's is build what you can afford to build, but build. You know, we've, we've fallen way behind. You know, if you look at, you know, from a competitive standpoint, you know, we compete. Second in the West Coast Conference as an overall athletic department. Yet we're funded dead last in the conference. If you look at since BYU has come in, you know, WCC has really established itself as the best. All-around non-power six conference in the country. Like we won five national championships last year as a conference. Yeah, but you look at since this concept, you know, Gonzaga's built a brand new stadium, Portland's built a new stadium, Santa Clara's built a new stadium. University of San Diego's built new stadium. You know, when you look at what we're trying to do, I mean, this last year. You know, we had, you know, Corbin Burns, you know, won the Cy Young Award. And, you know, Tony Gosselin was on the, you know, on the Dodgers, you know, World Series team the year before, like we're trying to compete at a really. High level and it's really tough to bring in top recruits after they've been at a really nice stadium to basically come in and look. At Little League bleachers right now, which is essentially what we have behind home plate. So I think from, from that standpoint, from a recruiting standpoint, just from a student experience, you know, it's just. It's a tough place for our kids to play. It's a tough place for our fans and families to come in. And watch and Asira has also talked about the safety issues with the, with the, 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 uh, level of the nets. And it really lights it, I think, you know, honestly, if St. Mary's did. You know, four hundred thousand dollars in, you know, facility improvements from two thousand and six to two thousand and sixteen. I'd actually say that's probably a lot, you know, by the end of this project. Which is fully donor funded, like a hundred percent, everything is, has been fundraised by donors. We are a hundred percent cash in. You know, we'll be looking at close to doing thirty million dollars of renovations in the last five years and really to keep. What we're doing going, I mean, you look at, I mean, he's beat the number one team in the country the other night. In, in basketball, you know, and to keep that competitive level across the board. You know, I think for the long-term sustainability of the college, like our getting our facilities up to par is, is huge and key for. For the sustainability of our success for the next twenty-five years.
Thank you very much. Do you have a presentation you wanted to put together or would you like someone else to? Say anything?
I have it. I'm getting ready to share it. Hold on one second. Oh, I don't have screen sharing. Ability.
kinds of fun technical issues. Do we have someone in planning department that can get her screen sharing ability?
Yeah, we're working on it.
You should have the ability to share the screen. If not, you can email that presentation to me and I can play it.
Are you forwarding that on too?
Um, I'm, I'm also trying to pull them up. I, I have a. A copy.
Okay, I just sent it again. I had to delete some because it was too large, so Mio should have it now.
Okay. Okay, here we go. And I'm just gonna share my screen very quickly. Uh, Mio, I need to be able to share the screen.
It's not letting you share the screen either?
No, it says host disabled.
But we'll be ready to entertain any questions from the commissioners as we're waiting or would that be okay to move to that point? Director Hamid, is that okay if we do that?
Yes, of course.
I didn't know if it was a protocol issue, but okay, Vice Chair Hillis.
Yeah, um, just the, the question I was asking for is purely out of curiosity and I think you kind of answered it. So I couldn't tell from the staff report it, so it was, it was due to COVID, but it sounds like it's more. A shortfall in donor funding versus a need. So I'm wondering if there is envisioned a phase three. So that if funding became available, that it would be expanded to the original vision or is the, is the. The intent that it would stay to the, the current smaller scope.
I think at this point, our intention is to stay at the smaller scope. We are funded for both the bleachers and the nets. We're still trying to work on the funding just to get the landscape and the ticket office, so I don't see that in the next few years. Definitely, there's a possibility if we start to grow the program later on to come back and ask for additional. Seating or expansion, but at this point in time, I don't see that in, in the near future at all. Mike, you might be able to, you know, follow up on that a little bit.
Well, the reason we came up with the six fifty is that we have the ability through kind of like our bullpen areas and the sides to actually bring in. Temporary seating to get you to fifteen hundred. So the key would be if you get to a point where you're actually hosting a regional. That you can bring in temporary seating. And we did that at University of San Diego, UCLA does that, a lot of other schools do it. So that's really, we actually called in our bleacher company and asked them, how many temporary seats could you bring in if we had the season structure? And that question that got us to fifteen hundred and that's really how we settled on the six fifty number is permanent seats, because for the most part. You know, that's, you know, that's more than enough seating than, than, than what we need.
Thank you. And I, I did have one other question. So, um, as I'm sure you're aware, Bayer Ballplayers currently has temporary use of. A site near, um, where basically where the Maraga Center specific plan envisions future development. Some facilities lease out when your teams aren't using them. I'm wondering if you, uh, not pitching directly for them. But if that type of thing is something that the university has been open to in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we do facility rentals all summer with local club teams. So pretty much every day in the summer, you know, outside of our, really in the summer, it's, it's youth camps to the community. All through the morning and then the afternoon, the weekends, we rent out the facility.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from commissioners or the applicants?
Yes, yes, if I may.
Mr. Davis?
I got a mirror image here. I can't tell which hand I'm using. But present, we've got a hundred seats. We're gonna go to six sixty-two. Where are we gonna park these people?
So that was actually part of the original plan and the plan was for over nine hundred seats. So in the master plan, when we did the original analysis, it was considered that we would have all of those. There, there was enough parking for over nine hundred, so at this point with less than six. Less than seven hundred, it shouldn't be an issue at all.
Those are all in paved places on the campus.
Correct.
The reason I'm asking is that there are two non-paved, non-permitted parking areas. Adjacent your sports facilities on St. Mary's at this time. Those were specifically not supposed to have been used the last time we all met. They were used for two years. One of them's been locked down since COVID. And the other has been paved in gravel since COVID. What's going to happen with those?
Can you be more specific on which lots you're talking about?
I'm taking a look at your drawings, the campus site plan in the bottom right-hand corner of the first sheet. Golf zero zero. Looking at the. Left-hand margin, three quarters of the way up. You notice that there is a small gravel and dirt access off of St. Mary's. That is frequently used by tennis players or was. It's been locked for the last two years. It was a condition of approval at the time of your master plan's approval that that gate would be locked. It was not locked for two years. It has been locked the past two years. And I'm looking for confirmation that it will remain locked, except for emergency use or something similar.
Yeah, that, that lot will remain locked. It, we do have an easement with East Bay mud. So at times you will see them parked in that area because they actually have a key to the lock and are able to access it. But we don't have any use for our on-campus students, so as you said, over the past two years, it's been completely locked for any athletes.
Okay, I appreciate.
Through the, through the chair, I did check with the police chief today. And that area specifically is for emergency vehicle access.
I wouldn't assume any Ed Mud folks are bringing their tennis rackets, so that should make that much better. Lot of concern was not present four years ago. And that's at the northwest corner of the campus in the beginning of the S curve, just north of Ream. Uh, which is now a gravel paved semi-permanent lot. With a crowd control barrier for a gate that's standing wide open.
Actually, I went past it today. It is closed, so we do have an issue with some of the folks in Maraga coming and moving our barricades. And coming into that lot. It is closed for any college access. It was, um, there was a lease agreement with PGME. That was permitted by the town of Maraga a while back for their use when they were doing some work on the utility lines. But ever since that point, it has been closed and if it gets moved by. Outside folks, we work back and make sure that it gets closed back off. So we do ask the community not to use that lot.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. I'd be perfectly happy to donate some chain and padlocks for you to close those barriers up if you'd like.
Absolutely.
I'll do that. I'll take care of it. Okay, um, thank you. That was my only residual concern. You already answered the lighting and the speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, I do have the ability to share the screen and start the presentation.
Okay. Would you still like to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do we still have time?
Yes.
All right, so you should all be seeing that now.
So since we've talked about this, we can somewhat fly through it, but if you want to go to the next slide, you can basically see our current conditions. On the campus. So right now, we just have temporary fencing. It definitely doesn't have a level. Of professionalism with our counterparts, kind of like what Mike had talked about in the past. We would definitely like to have a more permanent set of stands, ticket office and fencing. You can keep going. There's our press box and there are dugouts. Uh, here's a small rendering of what the, the seating will look like. We're actually pulling the seats back so that we can make sure. We have sight lines down the first and third baselines. You can see the seats, what they will look like. You can keep going through it. Again, this is just an overhead view of what the new bleachers will look like. Obviously, much more substantial than the ones that were there before. You can keep going. Uh, here's just a little perspective so you can see where the proposed bleachers will be. We've moved them so that you can see down both baselines and. Lowered the roof on our dugouts that was done earlier. Um, and then from this viewpoint, you can see the additional fencing and some of the landscape that will be added. Keep going. Um, here are dugouts. These were approved before, so this was just to lower the roof on the dugouts. It was too high. So you wouldn't be able to see from the bleachers down the, um, both of the baselines. You can keep going through this. This is pretty quick. We've already talked through most of it. Um, the nets, one of the issues that we had right now was that our nets were too low. Basically, the balls were going up and over like we talked about earlier and creating a safety issue with our rec center. So not only hitting the roof, but actually landing in the pool where we had people who were swimming, so it was very, very unsafe. We're looking at raising those purely for the, um, in order to improve the safety of those folks who are walking around and bystanders.
Oh, wait, where's the really nice image, the landscape image and the architectural image? Hold on.
I went through some of the. Bird's eye view images already.
Okay.
Can I ask a question while you work on finding that?
Um, yes, Commissioner Polsky.
Thank you. Um, how did you determine the height for the new netting?
Mike, do you want to answer this or do you want me to go?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, yeah, we kind of looked at, um, we kind of looked at the trajectory of, of where balls land right now. And again, we, and we use kind of the, the expertise of West Coast netting, which really does. Pretty much netting for every college baseball stadium in the West Coast. So taking that up to sixty-five feet is what we really, like, most of our areas of problems are right adjacent to the rec center. As well as right in the parking lot adjacent, so this would probably take care of probably about eighty-five percent of our problems. With, uh, with foul balls. It's not gonna catch everything, but it's gonna solve the vast majority of our, of our issues.
Any other?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty standard height. I mean, if we want to go again. Going to Carrie's comment earlier of being a Santa Clara Bronco. If you go down to that stadium down there, those nets are probably well over a hundred feet. It looks like a one big giant kind of monkey cage all the way in, all the way around. This will not reflect that at all.
They have more lawyers down there.
That's from commissioners. Certification. Sometimes being none, I'm gonna ask. Oh, I see. Okay, Commissioner Teal, go ahead.
Through the chair, what I heard the question was from Commissioner Thiel was if there is gonna be a need for lighting in the future, is that correct?
Correct. Is my audio not coming?
Yeah, your, your audio is very faint, so if, if, um, the applicant would like to respond to that, please.
I will say this, we are the only West Coast Conference school right now that currently does not have lighting. Every school in the, does the West Coast Conference, we are probably actually the only division one college in California. Other than UC Davis that does not have lights at its baseball stadium. So I'm not gonna say no, I'm not gonna come ask this down the road because it really. You know, again, when you start talking about regionals, when you start talking about renting out the facility. You know, having, look at Campo Marimani playing their rival game at the stadium, like. Lights are a big, are a big part of it, so, um, again, we're not in that scope right now. But what I want to entertain it down the road, yes, because, you know, it's just like I said, I mean, you look at like Ellen, like most of the places that you look at. Whether it's, and again, I worked at University of San Diego for thirteen years as well, so. USD, LMU, Gonzaga, like, those are all right in residential areas and they have really good. You know, use agreements on how many night games you can play, what time they can, is the latest they can start at. So we ever get to a point where, yes, we want to look at funding that and lights would cost. A little bit over a million dollars to put in at that facility. I mean, we would, when we come to that, you know, if we came to that meeting, we would also have our use agreement. Which is again, a certain limit of number of games, you know, again, no later than certain times. Something that we could work with the town on, uh, if we can get to that point.
I could volunteer. There's also a lot of new technology for limiting like, light leakage.
Or the Musco, like the Musco lights now, like if you, Musco is the one company, they do all college lights. I mean, you can, to your point, Carl, you can be ten feet behind a pool. And you are in, standing in pitch black and the light is so direct onto the field now. Like even where the, the recreation field is right now, those are actually not very good lights, like we've, you know. You know, same thing. I mean, we look at it at the student experience. I mean, even if you look up at the stadium, you know, you play Santa Clara women's soccer. You know, you play Santa Clara women's soccer at three o'clock on a Thursday, we're going to get, I mean, they're defending national champion. You're going to get three hundred people for that game. You play that game at seven o'clock in the same night, you're going to have three thousand people there. And, and again, I think that's the difference too, of not only the students on campus, but also the kids in the community to come out and watch. You know, two top twenty-five women's soccer teams, I think is, is, is huge. And that's probably the one thing we hear the most from the community as well. It's like, I wish you guys, you know, had lights that we could play this game. You know, later in the evening to come watch it. Because it is, you know, I said, it's, it definitely changes the entire environment. And it's used against those big time of recruiting as well.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Bodie?
Yeah, so Mike, um, I actually was uh, at Wrigley Field in nineteen eighty-eight, the day they put up the lights. And uh, it only took them thirty years to win world championship, so.
Well, if I want to be the same areas in thirty years, so.
That's right. But, but to that point, I think it's a great idea.
Hi, um, Vice Chair Hillis.
Follow up on that. Um, does your current EIR allow um, for something like that? Or would you have to go back in and redo it again in order for uh, for a future project like that?
I don't know that our environmental impact report um, considered lighting because it wasn't part of the scope on the original project or now. So we would have to take it back.
Got it.
Um, I will raise a question. Uh, this might be a phase two issue, but I noticed that on page nine of the staff report. Under the Saint Mary's design guidelines, there were three mentions of providing benches. At various locations in these areas. And then I didn't see any benches in your proposal. So I'm wondering if. You thought about benches. It was mentioned three times that maybe it was um, a significant issue for your school.
So it is something that we try and do, um, especially with COVID. We have been really working on outdoor seating for our students. Um, one of the things that we found with the stadium is that there's actually an area on the side. Where instead of doing individual chairs, we've moved to bench seating, um, just because that allows for our students to sit. Um, and we also, um, whenever we have green space, we're able to do that. Unfortunately, with this project, we, we are encroaching on areas that. We're already seating for bleachers and um, parking lot, and we don't want to take any more spaces out. Um, as we move forward, so we don't have spaces for like individual bench seating like we have throughout the master plan. Um, but it is something that we do in the main campus all of the time.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, the tile roof will not be clay. So the baseballs don't smash it. What will it be? Oh, material, if you know.
So Jim or Corey, I can let you guys answer this, but yes, we are not doing a clay roof because that would not probably stand.
We've been approved for a metal roof. So just like the dugouts will match the roofing on the dugouts and the batting cage.
Okay, so the metal, it will be then like metal sheets versus tile look?
It's, it's metal sheets, but it matches the color of the roof of the sports center.
Okay. So it's the same color as all of our tile roof, but it's more of a corrugated metal.
We've used it in the past in two different locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that?
It matches the, the heating facility.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Those are on my.
Standing seam metal roof?
It's not a standing seam. It's a. Oh goodness, I can't, I just lost the name of it, but it's not a standing seam.
The PBR um, corrugated roof.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, are there any more questions before we move to public comment on this item? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I think at this time, we will open this item for public comment. Um, if anyone in the public wishes to speak, please raise your hand. You will have three minutes and please state your name and address for the record. Seeing no hands. Then we will close public comment for this item. And we will bring this back to the commissioners for any further discussion. If there is any before we move to. For a motion to approve or deny.
Given, given where Carrie started things, do I need to acknowledge that I'm a graduate of Saint Mary's?
It's a little late in the process for that.
Uh, we haven't voted on anything.
Um, I don't think that you do.
Okay, it was twenty years ago.
Okay, are you currently receiving anything from the college?
Only the benefit of a great education.
And I think we are.
Okay, as long as nobody's concerned. I want that to be a surprise.
Brenda, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the uh, project per the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'm trying to find the resolution here. I'm going to need to read our um. Our little resolution description here. Uh, do you have that, Commissioner Helber?
Sure. Adopt planning commission resolution for Saint Mary's College to approve the permitted use determination. UP hyphen zero one hyphen twenty-two and design review permit DRB hyphen zero one hyphen twenty-two. To allow for the construction of a four thousand three hundred and twenty-four square foot, twenty-one foot, ten inch high. Tall, new, I'm sorry, ten inch tall, new baseball stadium, new entry plaza and redesigned landscape. At one nine two eight Saint Mary's Road, APN two five eight hyphen one five zero hyphen zero zero five.
Was that your second, Vice Chair Hillis? Okay, and we will take a roll call vote. Uh, Vice Chair Hillis.
Hi.
Hi, Commissioner Helber.
Hi.
Commissioner Luter, I'm sorry, he's not there. Commissioner Polsky.
Hi.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Bodie.
Hi.
And Chair Lester, I, the resolution passes unanimously. Was that a resolution? That uh, matter is finished and the public or anybody has the ability to appeal uh, within ten days by contacting the town. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just fair enough. Bring you some blocks and chain.
Okay, we will move on. We will move on to our second um, public. Item here, the, we will review annual general plan and housing element implementation report for two thousand twenty-one. For recommendation to the town council and provide input on planning department two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three work program priorities. That was the staff report direction. However, it is my understanding we are not to be providing. Input on priorities. We are just recommending to the town council that they review and decide on priorities.
Correct. So this is the, a general plan annual report. Um, and the reason it's important is because this is what the state law requires that we provide. Um, by April first of every year. And it's basically a documentation of what we've done in the prior year. So you know, like your taxes, you know, you do everything for the prior year, same thing. Um, what it allows us to do, well, what it allows is number one, HCD tracks. Our numbers, the data that we've provided um, for our accomplishments. And also for how many housing units we've built. So it's kind of important. And then secondly, um, when we submit this, um, by submitting it, we are actually um, then. In a line for transportation grants and for other grants. Um, so that's pretty important um, in terms of making sure that we submit this in a timely manner. Um, and yes, the chair is correct. Um, the planning committee, the um, staff report does say um, the town work program priorities, but those are a, a council. Uh, objective, they establish that. Um, so we're just making a recommendation. Um, and this is not really a vision or anything or uh, policy. This is just basically. Um, policies, programs and actions that have already been set forth in the general plan, including the housing element. And we are documenting those items that have been completed. So with that, I will let. Um, I will introduce Brian Horn. He's our associate planner. And I will, um, Brian Horn has been working on this and uh, I will let Brian uh, make the presentation.
Uh, good evening commissioners. Um, so yeah, I have a PowerPoint, but it's not um. Going to go, obviously not going to be able to share the screen, but I'll kind of just go through. Go through some of the, the highlights of, of the report and then um.
Sorry, do, um, can you email it to Mio?
I could, um.
And he can try to share it?
Well, actually, Mio, do you have access to the P drive?
I do.
So it's the second item in there. I just created a little folder in there. Or it's actually the first item.
Would you like to start sort of summarizing as we're waiting for that to come up?
Sure, I can do that. Let me.
And we can catch up with your PowerPoint once we get there.
Okay. So let me, hey Mia.
Yeah.
So it's number one PowerPoint, there's not a PowerPoint in there?
Well, it's correct.
Hmm. It's. It's here. It's interesting. Well, I guess I'll just go through the report then, I think is what, what I'll do. So. So it's basically state law requires that a local jurisdiction report annually on progress toward implementing the general plan. And achievements and housing element achievements and objectives to two state agencies, uh, the Office of Planning and Research. And the Department of Housing and Community Development. Additionally, Maraga General Plan Implementation Measure IPA four requires town to conduct an annual review on progress towards. Implementing the general plan and, and that will help inform the budget process and work program objectives. So the purpose of the general plan is to express the community values and guide the town's long-term development by establishing the overall policy framework. For making development decisions within the town. The town's most recent comprehensive update to the general plan was adopted in two thousand two. And the general plan is organized into eight elements, um, consisting of land use, community design, circulation, open space and conservation. Public safety, community facilities and services, growth management and housing. So just going through at this point, some of the highlights of the, of two thousand twenty-one, the town began work on a, the advanced planning initiative. Which um, includes a six-cycle housing element. Um, will include an environmental impact report, rezones, including the general, um, the Bolinger Canyon study area. And it up, and updates the general plan. The bulk of work began, or the initial work with the public began in October twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Where meetings began to be held. Um, and the expectation is that this will continue throughout two thousand twenty-two. With the set adoption date of January two thousand twenty-three, which is when it's due to um, HCD. For their final approval. Other projects that the town, that the um, planning department worked on during this, this time, it was the Excel accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was adopted. Um, in, on April fourteenth, the two thousand twenty-one. And the small cell wireless ordinance, which was adopted on December eighth, the two thousand twenty-one. You recently saw the water, model water efficiency landscape ordinance, which staff worked on for the majority of, or a good portion of two thousand twenty-one. And came to, to the uh, planning commission on January fourth of two thousand twenty-two and was adopted by town council on February ninth. And staff also worked on the three-step development process on a study session in April. So those are some of the, the larger um, ordinance code amendments that, that, that staff in the town worked on. So some of the major projects that came, came through the South Camino Pablo Annexation Project, um, that was. Probably thirteen units on approximately a twenty-three acre property. Um, that went to the planning commission on June fifteenth, um, and planning commission recommended denial of the project. Um, and that was appealed by the applicant and went to the town council on um, August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. And the town council um, upheld the planning commission's decision. Um, in noting, in their determination, knowing the project would be inconsistent with several general plan policies. And the proposed pre-zone was not consistent with the general plan and a community need was not demonstrated. Other projects that were worked on during this time are the Headfield Estates, um, precise development plan, um, that was. Um, came, actually came to the planning commission during your last meeting. Um, a couple other projects that are currently, you know, at staff level at this point are um, some SB thirty-three applications. One is the Maragas, a specific center plan, plan area fourteen. Um, this is kind of the, is the nine hundred block, block of Country Club Drive, um, behind the Aegis. It's about a six acre parcel, um, and there, there's a proposal there currently for a hundred twenty-two market rate units. Um, and one senior unit. So that's, and that's like a um, a condo type of apartment, um, development. And then um, MTSP areas fifteen and seventeen, which are located um, at the end of. Maraga Way, it, um, it's a, the parcel that has um, an orchard on it. Um, and I believe that's a little bit over six acres as well. And there's a proposal for thirty-three single family residential lots. On the, on those, it's actually consists of two lots on that property. Um, some other things that, that were reviewed were um, the temporary outdoor sports training facility. And these were reviewed by the planning commission, um, that was um, at thirteen twenty-five Maraga Way. Um, recommendation of the skate, the skate park fencing. Um, review of three existing wireless facilities for um, either renewal or modification of their permits. Uh, the grading review for the Maraga Country Club and review of two pergolas, one at the top of the front of the Maraga. Town chambers and one at the um, Cannon Club Brewery, um, for consistency with um, with design guidelines. So currently, some other active major projects that the town is working on is we have several projects that we're still uh, finalizing as far as. Or have been finalized in two thousand twenty-one as far as inspections, and those are the Maraga Town Center homes. Um, there was, the final units there were, were completed um, this year. That's by, over by the fire station. I believe it's Fire Station forty-one over on Maraga Way. And um, also Camino Ricardo, there's still work going on as far as finalizing the park on that. And they're working with Public Works on that to get the park dedicated. Um, Ranch Laguna Two wrapped up in two thousand twenty-one and they're in their warranty period. Um, and then Los Encinos, they finished construction of ten single family residences. Um, and are preparing to do their final um. Final walkthroughs, I believe, for their, for their improvements. And then for the Maraga Country Club Engraving is another fairly large project that's been ongoing um, in the town in two thousand twenty-one. So the housing element is, um, this, this report includes a report on the housing element. And this is for the fifth cycle housing element, which is, was adopted in two thousand fifteen. And the site, it's the fifth cycle housing element, so it goes from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three. If that, for that housing element, there were two hundred twenty-nine units allocated for the town to meet. Um, and seventy-four percent of those were to be very low, low and moderate income households. So in two thousand twenty-one, housing units constructed, and this is the building permits final, it was twenty-four. Housing units permitted were three, and that's what actually gets counted for each year. They count. Housing units permitted were three, and that's what actually gets counted for each year. They count the units permitted. There was one affordable unit. If this for this this cycle, and that's a smaller accessory dwelling unit. Overall, for the period of two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty three, there were a hundred and thirty two permits issued. But majority of those were for above moderate housing, so units actually counted towards the arena. So the arena being two hundred and twenty nine would be sixty eight. So that's sixteen market rate units and then some, I believe it's seven moderate units and one low. Low income unit. And this would be the portion where we kind of highlight the table B of the housing and progress report. So that's the table that shows the progress through the through this housing element cycle. Which reflects those numbers that that I just mentioned. So the report also goes on to. Discuss some of the other implementation highlights for the town. Public public facility improvements, and I'll just go through a couple, I'll kind of go through a little quicker here. So for example, for the hacienda, they completed the ADA pathway. For the funding for that, they also completed a stairway at the hacienda, at the La Sala Stairway at the hacienda. And have been working with Wedgewood to complete various site improvements as well. And Commons Park upgrades have included. Design of the picnic area, installation of the skate park fence, pathway improvements, and then there's some initial design. For the replacement of the irrigation system at Commons Park. Other improvements include partnering with the Maraga Garden Club to establish a monarch habitat at Ranch Laguna Park. Replanting of two medians within the town and reinstating the town's Tree City USA status and planting. A number of trees throughout the town. Some as part of the Paramount Festival and others for mitigation for some of the Bolinger Canyon improvements. Other public infrastructure improvements, you know, I think the big one was reaching substantial completion of the Canyon Road Bridge. That was pretty. Good mark for the town to get that completed or substantially completed. And a number of resurfacing of streets and street repairs. That go on just as an annual basis with the Public Works Department. Stormwater and infrastructure improvements include. Completing engineering design for Maraga Road and hacienda Park Storm Drain Repair. Project and phase one, and also completed phase one of Laguna Creek Restoration at the hacienda. Daylight the existing creek and remove undersized culvert. The police department continued to do home security checks. They partnered with. Lommer to certain porting of local agencies on active shooter program. Mail postcards to residents to notify them of their appropriate evacuation zones. And information of registering for the community watch system to receive information during emergencies. And also partner with MOFD on the town's evacuation plan and supported similar planning efforts throughout the county. Parks and Recreation Department was able to resume their in person events in two thousand and twenty one. And another, a number of them set records for attendance, including hacienda nights, family camp out, movie under the stars, the Paramount Festival. And some of their other holiday events. Resumed their in person school enrichment programs, expanded expanded enrollment in town summer camps. And did a new United Against Hate campaign, which was added to the event programming. Other, so public outreach and community engagement, the town continues to, you know, maintain our website and do all of our public meetings. As well, and maintaining online platforms such as Open Town Hall and and participate in Nextdoor and Nixle. And then during this period as well, the town developed and released surveys for the housing element and held three community workshops as part of that process. So getting into the planning department work program for two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. One of the the there's several town council goals that are directly or related to. Planning priorities or the planning program. One of these is to continue updating the towns consistent with the town semi rural character. The Maraca General Plan and Six Cycle Housing Element, so that's probably one of the biggest ones for for the planning department. Other. Other goals that are related to our work is improve the town's communication and outreach. To the public using innovative approaches that are inclusive of all segments of the community and encourage public feed input. Input and feedback. Lessen the town's impact on the environment by continuing to implement sustainability initiatives and viable strategies of the Maraca Climate Action Plan. Continue to work collaboratively collaboratively with the community, including the chamber, to improve Maragas business climate. And improve and enhance the collaboration and partnerships for Saint Mary's College. Some of the planning department's ongoing objectives are to continue processing the. Are you know, some of these major project applications, including the MCSP area applications and. And things like the Saint Mary's baseball improvements, baseball stadium improvements. Still, a goal is to complete the Little Maraca Road project. We'd like to update the wireless communication ordinance. And not the small cell that was updated this year, but the over the, I guess you call it the macro cell. Ordinance and bring that more up to date with state law. And then continue obviously to work with the planning commission and board on reviewing these projects. So it's the recommendation that the planning fish review the annual general plan and housing element reports. And adopt a resolution recommending their acceptance. To town council and authorize staff to submit these reports to the governor's office, planning and research, and the State Department of. Community Development, and that concludes staff's report.
Okay, thank you. And commissioners, do we have questions? Or staff? Process here will just be questions specifically, we'll move to public comment and then we'll come back for. Our comments and our decisions, FYI, so.
Thank you, Planner Horn. Excellent word as usual. Um, I'm going to make a very small note before our resolution goes to the council. In the second whereas. On the first page of the resolution, in the first sentence, you should probably put a verb.
So sorry, we're so the second whereas.
The second whereas, whereas town of Maraga Housing Element. IPH one annual progress report. It it actually needs to have an action in there to have a warehouse. Nothing major, but. Not necessary to go forward with. The other thing I would I've. Like just to say for the record. I'm very disappointed to hear about area fourteen under the MCSP. Going from being a senior unit to being open public housing. Commercial housing, sorry, public's maybe not the right word. And I would suggest that that significantly changes. Any impact reports that that project would need to stick. Hundred and twenty two. General use occupancy apartments immediately adjacent to retirement communities. Not to mention many single family homes. Doesn't seem like a best use in my mind.
Commissioner Davis, let me have you revisit this comment during our comments period so that it's in the record, so the town council can get what you're saying.
Yes, I thought this was the comment period.
We're keeping it on questions at this point.
Very good. Question that I would ask to go with that is how did? Or why did it shift? It was a beautiful plan when it was a third senior home adjacent to senior homes. It's not.
Yes.
That I that specific item is not on the agenda tonight. And we cannot comment on that or comment on what the developer has intense intentions for that project.
That project is not before us, so we can't.
The project is not before us, okay, so it's just a statement of fact at this time. Consider it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point, but we can have more comments later if you have any more.
No, my comment with me would be, I would hope to see that well addressed when it does come before us.
Okay. Commissioners? Questions? No, okay, I just have a couple real quick. And and I'm going to mention this because I know that we are not supposed to be. Visualizing and doing any of that sort of thing, but. This report does mention that we have a significant amount of funds coming to the town, and it does mention. Where those funds look like they're going to be allocated thus far, so. I want to ask, I wanted to ask the question because in the budget, there's so much emphasis placed on drainage and road improvements. I was just wondering if there alternatively could be anything. Pertaining to business growth in Maraga, if that's a consideration, if they're looking into that, you know, funding for a SWAT analysis. Strength, weakness, opportunity threats. Or regular regional updates in the area to let potential business owners know that Maraga maybe has better opportunities. Maybe we have increased our zoning, all those sorts of things to let them know that. That there is the possibility for their business to come to Maraga, tax breaks, whatever we're doing. I'm just wondering if. In our budgeting, if that was ever a consideration, because it does not look like anything was considered for business and part of the allocation, it just, I just want to clarify this. But you might not even need to comment. Funds can be used to backfill revenue loss expenses incurred due to COVID, which could include businesses. And make investment in broadband and store, broad broadband. Broadband and storm drain infrastructure. That seems very specific on what that. American Rescue Act Fund is supposed to be used for, and I don't know if that is just Maraga made it specific. Or if that's actually what it can be allocated for, so I guess my question is. If that is not the only allocation, have they considered other options for funding? With with what they have listed here on page four.
Through the chair, council is, council is evaluating the ARPA funds. And one of the discussions that is currently taking place is with the chamber.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is not a definitive list perhaps, okay. That's good.
And again, it's for everything that took place. Last year.
Right.
Well, not this year.
Okay.
So even though there may be some programs that council is considering this year, they would be documented in this report.
Okay. I was under the impression this was future expenditure that they were listing here, but maybe not. So then on page twenty two of the implementation report. Which also lists other expenditures. What is the difference between minor traffic safety program, local road safety program and safety improvements? Listed as three separate. Items.
Yeah, so I guess they they're classified as three different CIPs.
Right.
With the town. So let me take a look at those really quick. Start with the minor improvements. So the minor traffic safety program. Is. So the project description, the town has been contacting traffic engineering services to collect traffic data, like traffic volumes and speed data as a basis. For making minor traffic safety improvements. Such as traffic signage controlled intersection improvements, traffic calming devices, speed signs based on recertifying speed limits for enforcement, etc. So that's what that one is. What was the other one?
Local road safety plan. That's toward the bottom, the last two on that list on page twenty two.
So the basic project description is develop a local road safety plan to more. We plan a more systematic approach to improve road safety within the town. The project objective is quite longer. It talks about federal regulations require each state as a. Has a strategic highway safety plan, which is statewide data driven. So local road safety plan will provide Marago with an opportunity to address safety needs in their jurisdiction. It creates a framework to systematically identify and analyze safety problems and recommend safety improvements.
So then the next item, which is safety improvements, I guess would follow. The money's needed to make those improvements once we've identified that.
This might be something more immediate, you know, because this is something, it sounds like it's like a holistic plan to look at everything. But I think that maybe these safety improvements are just something that's more immediate that the town has identified, so it talks about. Installation of pedestrian improvements, including signage and striding to improve crosswalk visibility and improve pedestrian safety at the following intersections. That has Country Club Drive and Viator and several other. And I guess it's based off each S I P cycle ten grants, so a lot of the stuff that public works. Receives, a lot of the work they do is grant funded, so they kind of, when they get these different funds, they. You know, they obviously have needs and they apply it towards those needs.
Okay. And then I have just one small little question left, and that is page thirty one. And listed on here is central video surveillance system twice. Exact same listing for the exact same amount. And it's included in the total, so I'm wondering if that was just a faux pas that we accidentally listed that twice. Or if there are two different needs for this exact item.
It's a typo, yeah, it should just be in there once.
Okay.
Thanks for catching me.
Then is the. Final number here inclusive of both your double dipping with that one or want to double check that final number before you submit it?
We can, yes.
Do that, okay. Okay, and those are my questions. Any other questions from commissioners before we recommend to the town council? Okay, um, okay, oh, now we need to bring it to public comment, don't we? So. Let's do that, and then we can come back for any comments. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of this meeting. And anyone wishing to speak from the public can just raise your hand, using the hand raise hand feature. And state your name and address for the record, and I see no attendees. So I'm assuming there are no comments. From the public, I'm just going to wait one more second here, just to see if someone pops up. But they're not popping. No one's listening. Okay, so I will close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for any comments. At this time. And I am seeing that. So let's move to. To um, make a motion.
And I'll make a motion if you want.
Okay, who said that? Was that Commissioner Halber? Thank you.
I make the motion, though I'd like to say is very impressive when you look at this for the amount of work the staff has been able to facilitate. In any year, I think would be impressive, but when you take into consideration all the obstacles that the pandemic caused, it's just that much more impressive. It is widening its breadth and subject and detail. Congratulations to staff. But that said, I make a recommendation that we pass the resolution as suggested by staff. To recommend to town council the following actions. One, the approval of the general plan and housing element implementation reports. And adopt a resolution recommending the town council accept the annual general plan and housing element implementation reports. And authorize staff to submit these reports to the governor's office of planning and research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And the town work programs priorities related to implementation of the general plan. For the two thousand and twenty two hyphen two thousand and twenty three fiscal year. Did I say that right?
That encompassed everything.
Did we want to amend the resolution to include a verb?
And the and the edit in the 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 financial calculation on page thirty one.
To remove the the double and double check that. Final number. Of that budget there.
I sec, accept both friendly amendments.
And Brian, I don't really care what verb you stick in there.
Okay, I saw Commissioner Bodie, so I'm just gonna. Do that, okay, I'm gonna take a roll call vote, Vice Chair Killis.
Aye.
Commissioner Helber.
Aye.
Commissioner Polsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bodie.
Aye.
Chair Lester, I the motion passes unanimously. So we are finished with that public matter and we will move on to number seven, routine and other matters. There are no other routine and other matters right now. I know, so we will move on to reports. Any Commissioners have anything to report pertaining to the commission? I see none, so I will move on to staff reports.
Okay, thank you. The Planning Commission Academy is March sixteen. And I encourage you guys to try to register. We you just send us an email, we take care of the rest and we pay for it. So for those of you who've signed up, thank you so much. For those of you who are still considering it, please send us an email so we can take care of it. And I also wanted to bring up that tomorrow, March second is the Joint Town Council Meeting on Housing Opportunity Sites and Rezoning. If you have questions or would like to go through some of the staff report, because it's it's quite a lot, there's a lot of material in there to cover. And I can be of assistance and I can provide support and try to answer some questions that you may have. So please utilize my office hours and connect with me so I can assist you. Otherwise, I look forward to seeing all of you there tomorrow evening. And also Andrew Luter is no longer with the Planning Commission. But I wanted to take just a moment just to recognize all the hours and the efforts that he's put and just recognize his service. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm glad you did that. Thank you. Oh, Commissioner Davis.
Please, if I may, Director, I mean, I would like to emphasize the Planning Commission, Planning Commissioners Conference. I attended it last year by Zoom. And even by Zoom, it was an awesome event. And this year is live. And anybody who who can make the time to do it should strongly consider it. It was I go to I go to a fair number of workshops for my work. This was better than most, most anything I've been to. It was phenomenal, high energy, very positive, a lot of, a lot of sharp people and a lot of good learning. And that was even when we were all sitting at home. I'm I am strongly looking forward to this conference.
I am as well.
Hey, Director, I mean, just I realized I didn't respond. I think you had you'd asked me a question if I was interested in. I am, but I don't want the town to waste money if I can't confirm I can't be there.
Understood. Thank you so much.
Okay. Yes, thank you again to Commissioner Luter, former Commissioner Luter for all that he did. And thank you, as Commissioner Helber mentioned, and staff for all that you have done with the couple of you that are there. That's a huge undertaking, so we do thank you for that. And if you haven't signed up for the Academy, please do so. It'll be really fun, really interesting. Quick question, though. If a number of us are there, are we allowed to see each other?
Yes. It's a networking opportunity. I encourage you to network with each other. But please do not talk about any specific projects.
Got it. Okay, that's the one key.
No work related items.
Got it. Okay, fair enough. Okay, so I will move to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, there we go. Okay, Vice Chair Hillis, and do I have a second? Brenda Lester will second. All those in sweeper, say aye. Let me see some hands and I see every single hand there. That is unanimous. So we will adjourn for the evening. It is eight forty-one. Thank you so much, and thank you again to staff for trying to get the video all going, and that was crazy. And thank you to Commissioners for hanging in there. That was not our finest moment, but we did it.
I do appreciate that.
Only go up with my tenure.
That's right. And again, welcome, Commissioner Polsky.
Definitely.
Here with us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you next time.
Tomorrow night, guys.
All right.
Good night.